Okay folks, let's all rise and pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Hey, welcome again to the Village Board Village of Red Hook meeting. This is December 2014. Calendar year is almost over, amazing. But for us, we have a fiscal year which has six more months to go. So it's an important note for the Board. What I mean by that is when we look at some financials later, it's a good time to look at certain accounts because six months equals 50%. So those that are on budget will be right around a 50% number. Those that are over, bear scrutiny. But remember, the rule of thumb is not all are equal monthly payments, but it's a good rule. Anyway, we have a couple of unique things tonight on the agenda. What we'll do is I thought we'd look at the minutes as submitted and then we'd entertain item number two on our regular business agenda, which is Highway Shared Services update, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. But as far as the minutes, we had a meeting on November 10th, which was the regular Village Board meeting, and then a workshop on November 20th. You reviewed the minutes and made some edits and corrections. If everybody else has had a chance to look, and are there any other additions, alterations, or corrections?
There has a correction.
I have one on the November 10th minutes. It's under Individual Task Force, which is item four. Task Force Infrastructure. Just I think it was a misreading of my handwriting. Thought it was listed as THD Bishop Valley, it should be TND. So there's two of those in the second bullet point and one in the third bullet point. It just needed to be changed for the right hand.
Okay, so if the acronym THD doesn't exist, it should be TND for Traditional?
No, not my world name.
Okay, Traditional Neighborhood Design.
I have one other item here. Page two, Planning and Zoning. It appears that Nola Hooper and Ron Hicks are retiring. It's just Nola.
Did you say that again?
Just, just Nola is retiring.
Okay, good, because when I was reading it, I remember you saying people are retiring, but I didn't know that the second name was...
What was the other name?
Ron Hicks.
Ron Hicks is on here, but he's not retiring.
Okay.
He's, he's the new guy on the block. He'll be around for a little while.
So we'll just, we'll just state that trustee Trapp, let's see, instead of both will be retiring. Trustee Trapp is on the board with the Dutchess County Department of Planning and works with Nola Hooper, who will be retiring January 2015. Do you have that clerk?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have those two, one an acronym change and one deleting a retiring person. Any other additions, alterations, or corrections? Here we go, we'll accept those two and accept the minutes as submitted, all favor?
Aye.
I thought we'd get the treasury report done and then we'll step into Highway Shared Services because in my mind, the two are somehow interchangeable or linked in some fashion. And the other thing too, we'll let Cindy go and we'll talk a bit more about that. We'll get the highway shared up. Ready Cindy?
December 8th. Account balances, general fund $368,510.55. Water fund $83,040.56. Trust and agency $17,592.76. Materials management $2,475.29. Petty cash $35.77. Village Green $3,536.88. Hard Scrabble $5,682.88. Health insurance $4,941.28. Capital projects $3,606.96. Monthly expenses, general fund $81,898.83. Water fund $41,148.96. Trust and agency $17,592.76. Then materials management $3,354.88.
Okay, one thing that jumps out at me, at the workshop on November 20th, that capital projects line should be dropped down to zero.
Yeah, but Michelle wasn't in last week, so the adjustments didn't get done.
Well, that is just for folks out there. The funding for the water phase one, there was some money tagged within the capital project that had to be shifted back to water. And we voted on to move it back if the Board recalls. So it's, they'll just get that done when Michelle comes in, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, I would move that we accept the treasury report. All favor? Thank you. So Tim, if you want to stand up, and most of us know you, I think, from another meeting here, but it's a good segue to go from finances to shared services. One thing I would like our Board to think of, as we listen, this funded, this study is funded by the County of Dutchess under a grant we got with the town in Tivoli. The big thing though is with the upcoming budget year, not only do we have to think about the 2%, which is really the 1.46% tax cap, but we also have to think of creating that efficiency plan we brought up in a few meetings, where we have to look for ways to save 1% of our tax levy through efficiency planning. It doesn't necessarily mean cutting services, it just means trying to find ways to do what you do with 1% less money. That sets people up for the tax-freeze credit concept. We're not going to decide that here tonight, but one of our tools or something to consider is, are there some options with the Highway Shared Services? And we've spent, what, six or nine months already on it? And it's coming toward an endgame where we can make some decisions. So we thought we'd have Tim talk to us again and then also for the public in the audience and TV world. So Tim is a consultant hired through the grant. It's not crossing us directly from village town or village of Tivoli pocketbooks. He and a partner are really doing a great job for us, analyzing data details and making presentations. And with that, maybe if you want to say hello and introduce yourself and if you want to face the camera more than us, yeah, we could be more important.
Will do. So yeah, I was before the Board a while back presenting about this and then we've had a couple of public meetings. My name's Tim Weidemann. I work for Rondau Consulting, which is over in Kingston. And Peter Fairweather is the other consultant that's working on the project at Fairweather Consulting down in New Paltz. And the project is a Highway Shared Services study, as the mayor mentioned, funded through the Dutchess County Department of Planning through their Municipal Consolidation and Shared Service Grant Program. And so I'm here kind of about two-thirds, three-quarters of the way through the project. Oops, on battery. And I wanted to kind of use this as an opportunity to bring you all up to speed on what we've been looking at and share with you the results of the study so far. Really, at this point, I'll spend most of the time, brief time today, just talking about the study options that we've identified. So Highway Shared Services Study, what are the options for shared services between the Village of Red Hook, Village of Tivoli, and Town of Red Hook? And so I'm going to, I'm going to try to get this done in 10 or 15 minutes, which means I'm going to cram a lot of stuff in. But I want to make sure that if you all have some questions, that you have a chance to ask those. And then we'll put this presentation up on the website for the project, which you can get to through the villages' website. There's a link there for the Highway Shared Services Study. And then if you want to go directly to it, it's redhook.rondaucconsulting.com. Redhook.rondaucconsulting.com gets you to the study website. So to move through pretty quickly, the picture here, the chart, shows the timeline for the project. We started back in March, so it's been nine, nine months since we started the project. We worked through an initial kind of step to have a kickoff meeting and establish a committee between the two villages and the town, do a public meeting. We did a bunch of data collection in the early stage of the project, learning about the highway services that are provided in each of the three municipalities. And then the last couple of months, we've been working on a feasibility study and impacts study, looking at the options for Highway Shared Services, identifying them first, and then starting to analyze what would it take to actually do them. And then importantly, the study was set up in the original grant application with two goals. And I'll talk about those more in a minute, but quickly, to save some money, which speaks directly to the mayor's point, especially now under the governor's new tax-freeze program, that 1% elimination or reduction in the levy is an important step to take to get those tax-freeze credits, and so this can fit right into that. But importantly, the study goals also include improving the quality of services that are delivered around highway and streets, maintenance and management in the three municipalities. So we're getting towards the end. We were originally going to do a next public meeting in December, but a little bit of a delay in our process for the project. And then with the holidays, we decided that we're going to put that off till January and instead use December as a chance to get before the three municipal boards and talk about what we found so far in the study. So that's why we're here tonight. Before we're done with the project in March and February of next year, we will work on action plans that we can give to each of the three municipalities that reflect what are the kind of options that seem the most realistic and feasible and the most desirable to the three communities? How do we move forward with those? How do we apply for maybe some new grants to get the money to actually do those projects? How do we kind of shape things up and work things within the municipalities to implement some of the recommendations coming out of this process? So we don't just kind of drop the recommendations and leave. We want to help make sure that there's some steps lined up to be able to implement some of the recommendations. Okay, so again, this is something I talked about at the beginning when we first met with, with folks and during our first public meetings. We're not here to kind of force some answer on this conversation. We're really trying to look at what works in these three communities. Red Hook has kind of a unique situation, different mix of services in each of the three communities. How do we figure out a way that where those things overlap? We figure out ways to work together to provide those services more cheaply and more effectively. And we feel important now, especially at this tail end of the study, is to really start to get before the municipal boards because in the end, anything coming out of this that actually happens, happens through actions of the municipal boards. And so we want to make sure you understand the study and so that you can start to share your feedback and thoughts about what you like, what you don't like, and that we can kind of target our efforts towards those things that seem like they would work here in the village. Okay, so the goals and objectives of the study. I mentioned that one of the goals is to reduce costs. Explicit in the original grant application was that we'll look for opportunities to reduce the cost on highway services. And so we're looking at that now. How can we find some ways to reduce the cost of highway services in and between the three municipalities? But reducing costs is relatively easy if that's your sole goal. Because if you want to reduce costs, we all know the quickest way to reduce costs is to eliminate services. But we want to make sure that we also find in this study ways to not eliminate services, not even just kind of leave them at the status quo, but where possible, improve the quality of services that are being delivered. Highway and street maintenance is an important service. This is not one that communities can just do without. So we feel it's important to look not just at how we reduce costs, but how we improve the quality of those services as well. And this is also not a one-time, one-shot deal. You know, our involvement, Peter and I may be involved for a short, limited period, but the operation and maintenance of streets goes on after we leave. It was going on before we got here. So we hope that our work here can help to inform an ongoing discussion within the community about how do we deliver those important services in the most efficient and the most effective way possible. So in the course of trying to achieve those goals, we've been working on a bunch of documents. And I'm going to go through quickly a summary of each of these. But we had a task at the beginning where we analyzed the existing conditions. What are the existing highway services in the three municipalities? How are they provided? What's different and what's similar about them? And we put together a report called an Existing Conditions Report that's up on the website. The bulk of the project work has been on actually starting to identify and then study the feasibility of some options and alternatives for sharing those services that are provided in each of the three municipalities. We've already produced a report that we lovingly call a SWOT summary, which is a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats summary, which we gathered information from the departments and at a public meeting to talk about what do people feel that the departments do really well? What are the challenges that the three municipalities, streets and highway departments, challenges that they face? And we put all that together in the report. Then we identified the options that we think are kind of feasible options from an initial standpoint, things that seem like they might make sense here. And we've been working most recently on a feasibility study to dive deeper into those options, to figure out what's legally doable, what works within the context of the operations of the three municipalities, what seems like it would have the support of the staff and the elected officials as well as the public in the three communities. And so that's where we are now. Another reason that we're here before you, I'm here before you today to talk about these options, to get your thoughts and start to get the kind of juices flowing in your mind about what seems like it works well in Red Hook. The final step in that task three, that feasibility study, is actually to look at the impact of these options. Importantly, again, is we can use this as a tool to help with that tax-freeze program. What is the impact that these things might have on savings? Is there some substantial reduction in any form, shape, or size to the tax levies as a result of some of these shared services? I think we set this up at the very beginning by saying, look, when you try to balance reducing cost and maintaining or improving quality, you're not finding huge savings because huge savings don't usually come from that kind of setup. And so we hopefully have set the stage right, but I think it's important also note that there are some areas potential for potential savings here. And we're still, we're analyzing those now and looking at what the impact would be. But not just on cost, also on the quality of services that are provided. And then I mentioned the action plans that'll be at the end of the project. Okay, so our first report, Existing Conditions, it's up on the website. It looks a lot like this. And it was our starting point for the analysis. So if you haven't seen that yet, I encourage you guys especially to take a look at that and residents of the village to take a look at that. It defines what we see as the highway services that are provided in the Village of Red Hook, in the Village of Tivoli, and the Town of Red Hook. That may sound kind of trivial, but it's actually pretty important. It highlights some differences between the three municipalities that are really becoming more and more important as we look at what are the options for shared services. The Village of Red Hook, Village of Tivoli operate under, even though the Village of Red Hook has what's called a highway department, the model is more like a DPW than in the town where it's strictly a highway department. And that's an important distinction that has kind of far-reaching consequences when we talk about shared services. So that's outlined and detailed in that initial report. We had some public meetings, incorporated some public comments. The latest version of this is up on the website. The second report, it looks kind of similar, but it's up there and it's got a separate name. It's Strengths, Weaknesses, Opportunities, and Threats. As I mentioned, this is a summary of some input that we received from meetings with the departments, from meetings with the study committee, and from our public meetings earlier in the year. And that helped us to identify what are some things that people feel really strongly about, one way or the other, that we should keep in mind as we work through the study and identify options. And so there was some input, additional input during our last public meeting, which was a couple of months ago, and we've included that in the latest version of this and it's up on the project website. The third report is the one that I want to spend a little time talking about tonight. This is what identified the options that we think are kind of initially good options to explore and that we're starting to assess the feasibility and impact of. And so I want to go through those with you fairly quickly. I'm going to pack it in, but I want to make sure that they're familiar to you as you start to deliberate on this. So the options we've identified, really seven different options. The seventh one is actually out of the scope of the project, so I'll mention it, but then we'll move pretty quickly on past it. The options that are outlined here are ones that I'll go into a little bit more detail on in the next few slides. So, but let me explain, that there's kind of a grouping of options that we think of in the kind of consultant world as shared services options, true shared services, where each of the three municipalities implements some sort of contract or agreement between themselves to be able to provide services jointly or in coordination with one another. And so we've got four options that fit that model. The study kind of purposely at the beginning in the grant application set a pretty broad scope for what we would look at. And in the process of kind of filling that scope, we identified some restructuring possibilities. And these are to realign the service delivery areas so that each of the three municipalities might provide services in an area slightly different than its just traditional geographic boundaries. And then a final option of consolidating throughout the town all highway services. And we talked about this one in the initial meeting and I'll kind of get it out of the way here to say that our focus is going to be on those first six, but that we recognize that the restructuring ones, both of those last two and in particular number six, are kind of scary topics and people get really concerned when you start talking about consolidation of services. And so we heard that from the very beginning, from the first public meeting, and that's an important part of the input in the study process. It's, it's an option that we're going to include in the study to be able to weigh the pros and cons and to inform any future discussions about consolidation of highway services. But from the beginning, I think we saw that this was probably true and it's still this way. We don't anticipate that this is something that the three municipalities should move forward with very quickly. Consolidation option is not one that we're thinking as a recommendation out of this study at this point. The shared services options all seem like they're relatively feasible. They have some promise to be able to improve the quality of service and some promise to reduce the cost of services. So our focus is really on those first four. I mentioned that the seven options, the three options under number seven, are not really included in the scope of this study because the two villages provide highway services kind of jointly or with or in close coordination with their services of water and sewer and garbage and parks maintenance. Those all kind of wrap up into a DPW-style structure to some extent in the Village of Red Hook, more so in the Village of Tivoli. We've identified those because they're so intertwined with highway services in the two villages, but they're outside of the scope of the work that we're doing here. We're providing some brief recommendations that they may be other areas to look at. I know that the Village of Tivoli is looking at their water and sewer administration and potential shared services or coordination with the county wastewater and water authority. And so we'll kind of provide some guidance on some areas that might be explored further in those services. Okay, so right now, I'll quickly summarize that we're looking at the feasibility and the impact of those, those options. And I'll go through them in a little bit more detail. The feasibility has to do with three, you know, factors. Is there public support and elected official support? If we're going to do any of these things, they need to have the support of the elected officials and the support of the residents in the community. Secondly, in order to be done, it has to be legal. We have to have a framework for it in state law and local law. It has to obey existing contracts and agreements, that kind of thing. And then finally, it has to be something that could actually work on the ground. If we're recommending some option that isn't feasible from an operational standpoint, it doesn't go very far. So we drafted a report of this, we're working through that with the committee now. And we will release that publicly at our public meeting in January, along with an assessment of the impact of each of these options. So this is where I'm going to, I'm going to move pretty quickly and then let folks review this if you like, and we'll put a summary. This is a much shorter version of what we've put together for the steering committee, but it's still a little dense stuff, so it's something that you may want to take a look at over, over some time. But I'm going to walk you quickly through the six options that are kind of on the table here and summarize some of the key points from them. The first option involves standardizing common operating and managerial policies and procedures within the three municipalities. And so this, this is one that even makes my eyes glaze over occasionally because it's so dry, but it's actually critically important. As we began the process of the, of the study and talked with the three municipalities, we realized that there's not really even a common language about highway services within the three municipalities. It's really hard to do any comparisons because things are done relatively differently. They're talked about relatively differently. They're planned relatively differently. And we feel that that's kind of unnecessary and it gets in the way of conversations that could be really productive between the three municipalities. And the way to tackle that is by trying to figure out where there's some common procedures and policies between the three municipalities and then deliberately write those up and standardize those so that there can be that common language. We think this is important because it can do two things in particular. It can reduce the risks associated with long-term employee turnover and retirement. Every municipality everywhere is dealing with the fact that we have an aging workforce and people are retiring and people are moving on to other careers if they choose that. And occasionally, people are just choosing to leave either they move or they're just not a good fit for the department. And so what happens then is that a lot of institutional knowledge just walks away. And so it's important to capture that. We see standardizing some of the common operating procedures and policies within the three departments is an important way to do that. It would mean updating operations policies, trying to figure out what are the best practices? Who knows where this plow can and can't go? And you know, if it goes where it can't go, it's going to get damaged. So let's make sure that somebody knows that and so if somebody else has to drive that, that truck next year, they don't, they don't do something that they'll regret. What's the basic equipment use and maintenance guidelines that we need to make sure everybody knows? Training policies as well. How do we institute some training policies to improve workplace safety? Make sure that there isn't an accident that takes somebody out of the field? And then how do we actually set some standards for employment and especially for skilled positions? That over time, make sure that we have the right people doing the right things in order to promote the highest quality service that can be provided in the, in the village and the two, and the other municipalities as well? In the end, this helps by improving staff skills. And importantly, from a financial standpoint, it can also reduce training costs and promotes the potential for future shared services. The other area of coordination is, is to improve the coordination reporting among the departments. The administrative policies and procedures are a really tricky thing within the three municipalities. And so we see an opportunity to improve accounting and resource tracking. We can define some standard accounting codes, make the accounting more common between the three municipalities, which is again, a step in the direction of having a common language to talk about shared services. It also allows for better tracking and reporting, which I know from experience, small municipalities all over the state struggle with this. It's really kind of tricky to keep track of a lot of the detailed operations that are going on in a municipality in a way that supports the role of a board. And so we feel that this is an area where some coordination between the three municipalities can make it easier for the municipal boards to govern and oversee the operations of highway and streets maintenance. It also allows to, through those standard operating policies and procedures, some common service levels and potentially some identification of areas where there's inappropriate use of common equipment, which can inform some, you know, long-term savings in terms of reducing eliminated or eliminating duplication of equipment. We do all this in order to improve administrative reporting, performance tracking, and to decrease equipment cost, potential for future, future shared services as well. So these are the kinds of things that we're looking at in order to identify if there's some cost savings from this option. This one is the most complicated and dry, so I spent maybe a little too much time going through it. But it gives you a sense of the level of detail that we're looking at this stuff. And I hope that you'll kind of keep track of this one. This one is one that we feel is pretty easily done. It's one that I think would make things a lot easier for the three municipalities to plan and work jointly in terms of their highway and streets maintenance. So let me quickly run through the, the remaining options. The next one is to improve record-keeping and data collection through a shared administrative system. So most municipalities these days are looking at software systems to be able to help automate some of their operations. In the area of highway services, this is incredibly important. There are lots of very expensive assets that go into maintaining the highway and streets system, whether that's the vehicles that go out there and do that work, whether it's the actual infrastructure itself, the streets, the signs, all the other assets that are out there in the field. And so having a record-keeping system that would allow for better planning, management, and oversight of highway services, we feel is really important. So the way that something like this would work, we envisioned that the Town of Red Hook would really be the one that provides those administrative services. They have a kind of professional administrative layer through their town highway superintendent, and there's a part-time clerk there as well. And so they would, through that office, provide the administrative services of data collection, data entry, and reporting through an administrative contract with each of the, the two villages. The key functions that they would take on in doing this are tracking use of resources according to service. So this vehicle is used for plowing in the village. And it was used, you know, this many times or days or hours during the year, tracking the usage of those resources. Same for staff too, helping to better allocate staff time to particular services that they perform. They would use that in, in a company manner or jointly with accounting that is standard across the three municipalities, that would allow for common reporting, so there could be comparisons between the three municipalities and tracking of those services and their costs across the three municipalities. And then they would provide general highway administration as well. And to do this, we're proposing the addition of a half-full-time equivalent position in the town and then administrative software that the town would purchase in order to provide this service. So how would that help? It uses data to respond more quickly to the needs of each of the three municipalities. It improves the methods for tracking that data and collecting that data, hopefully freeing up department heads in the villages to perform other, less administrative work and more kind of in the field actually doing the work that needs to get done. We hope that it might reduce costs by providing more efficient staffing over time, being able to kind of allocate staffing in a more appropriate way, making more efficient purchasing decisions and potentially reducing overtime in the long run. So these are things that we'll be looking at in much more detail now that we're kind of getting into the impact part of the study, trying to figure out if those assumptions are really true and what kind of savings we might be able to achieve. The next couple are fairly straightforward. The third option is to develop a shared training and knowledge transfer program. This would look at ways to continue building the skills and knowledge of employees while also making sure that there's reduced risks with, again, with employee retirement, turnover. So in, in particular, this matches or links up well with the first option. If we've got standard operating procedures, it makes it easier to do standardized training across the three municipalities. And so we hope to have that option first and then identify some training opportunities. It would involve defining an annual training cycle, assessing the needs for training each year, identifying some shared training options, holding those trainings, evaluating those trainings. And then as well, in the SWOT analysis, those, those interviews with department staff and meetings with the public, people routinely express that there are some really, really good skill sets within the municipalities already. Some staff members who really know this particular system or this particular workflow. And so trying to identify folks internally who can provide training about certain aspects of their operation within and across the three municipalities as well. And so we'll need to look at ways that we can fund this and support the shared training program, but there are some shared training resources out there that might be able to do that. How does it help increase knowledge and best practices for all employees, making them more effective at doing the work that they do? And then also trying to reduce rework, maintain, or minimizing the actual cost for training the actual cost for training and making sure that it's provided, and then hopefully in the long run, the real savings would come from reducing turnover. The fourth option, long-range capital planning. So this is one that I think goes beyond just a shared services recommendation. I think all three municipalities struggle to some extent with capital planning. Capital planning is a really challenging thing, especially when it comes to highway-related needs, things like paving schedules. It's really easy to kind of get behind and then never be able to catch up. And so I think it's really important to keep an eye on the long-range capital planning. And so our recommendation here is to look at ways to do that municipality to municipality in a shared services arrangement. So the idea is to avoid unnecessary capital spending, but ensuring that each department has access to the equipment and facilities that it really needs to be able to provide highway services. And so this goes with that standardizing of common operating managerial policies and procedures because it helps to identify what are some equipment standards that we have in our municipality. And then that gets factored into a purchasing plan. Really, in the early stages of a shared capital planning, it's really happening within each of the three municipalities separately. So doing an asset inventory. That's something that the village has, but probably needs to be updated. And then importantly, from that asset inventory comes the capital plan that looks out five to 10 years, says what are the things that are going to need to be replaced? What is a realistic estimate of what the cost would be to do that? And then starting to lay out a purchasing schedule. Once that's in place, then conversations between the other two municipalities in this study, but potentially other municipalities outside of the study as well, can happen to identify are there opportunities here to make a purchase jointly or to avoid making a purchase altogether because we can share that piece of equipment with another municipality. And then in the end, that'll require some formal agreements. This is an unprecedented, this happens all the time, and there are examples right here locally of shared agreements between municipalities to either purchase or use a piece of equipment. And so in the end, we hope this helps, this gets the right equipment available to do the work that needs to get done at the right time. It also saves some money, hopefully, by eliminating duplicate equipment, avoiding those emergency expenditures. We need this piece of equipment now because the last one just broke and we don't have any other option. And then increasing the frequency with which bulk purchases or group purchases are made at a lower rate. Okay. Fifth option is a multi-pronged option here. This is one of our restructuring options. The initial ones were shared services. This is the first restructuring option. It looks at trying to realign services, say that the village of Red Hook, village of Tivoli, town of Red Hook, provide services within geographic political boundaries that aren't always the best boundaries for the actual provision of highway services. If a plow is driving through and it's lifting up its blade because that's not its geography, that's kind of silly. And so this option looks at how can we change the service areas for the three municipalities in order to make it more efficient? And so there are several options here. There's lots of different ways that we could go about that, but the way that we think initially here makes the most sense is kind of broad, but it involves intermunicipal agreements kind of across the board. So intermunicipal agreements in the village of Red Hook that would allow the village to provide highway services on certain town and/or county roads. And so we'd sit down, look at what are the ones that make sense, and then make sure that there's an intermunicipal agreement that allows for the village to do that. Same goes for Tivoli, that there's some town or county roads that the village of Tivoli's DPW drives right by or has to do in order to kind of get on a loop to get back to a village street, or that is just way out of the way for county or town trucks that they could provide more efficiently. And then finally, the town of Red Hook will also look at an intermunicipal agreement for some maintenance on county and state roads within the town to see if that works. And so each of the three municipalities is involved in its own way in a way that makes sense locally. And so this would happen by the town and the villages meeting annually, hopefully with county and state representatives, to determine the areas of coverage based on the equipment that's available, the routing that makes sense, and then the response times, rather than just kind of the standard political boundaries. This helps increase quality by making sure that the right equipment is available and that you've got it there to be able to use at the right time. And it allows the municipalities to kind of develop a specialization that addresses unique needs. The village of Red Hook, for instance, may take on some of the town roads that are in more densely populated areas where it looks more like a village. That's the kind of thing that might be possible through this arrangement. It would reduce costs, hopefully, by eliminating duplicated equipment, duplicate personnel if that eventually becomes clear, avoiding emergency expenditures, all of that kind of stuff. Finally, the consolidation option. Here's what we know so far. The need potentially is to eliminate duplication and redundancy, centralize the provision of public work services throughout the town. If this were to happen, the way that we're starting to see that it would need to happen is that first, the town would need to consolidate its public works-related services. The recognition is that right now, the town has a highway-only department. The two villages have a hybrid that includes more than just highway. In the village of Red Hook includes a couple other services. In the village of Tivoli is a full-fledged DPW. So the first step, if the consolidation were to happen, in our recommendation would be that the town consolidates to make a DPW-style department in the town. That allows then for a clear one-to-one mapping of departments, so that what we're talking about then, if the idea is to move forward, is a real department consolidation. In this case, that second step, the villages would transfer their DPW functions to that town DPW, maintaining separate units to manage the services under each municipality under one DPW head. And then an intermunicipal agreement would be drawn up between the town that provides those DPW services and the village that defines exact services to be provided, defines the service levels, defines the costs. And importantly, because the services would continue to be provided, village employees would transfer to that new town DPW, continue to provide services to their village as a unit of that town DPW. So this is all to put it out there, but again, our recommendation is not to go ahead with this. We feel like we owe, in the study process, owe some attention to the option, but you can see it's a complicated option with lots of steps just to kind of get it set up and ready, and so our recommendation is not to move forward with this yet. Finally, the seventh option was to look at other services. And so some of the things that were discussed are water sewer system, shared garbage collection, and shared parts maintenance. There's some opportunities here, we feel, and we're going to explore them a little further, but they're really beyond the scope of a highway services project. So we're going to treat them briefly and identify basically whether they seem like something that the village might want to look further into, see if there's another grant opportunity to hire somebody to help study this like they have in the village of Tivoli, and then pursue it further on your own. And again, the idea here would be to address some of the aging infrastructure problems and then hopefully reduce costs by getting some economies of scale, merging the operations or sharing services across these operations in order to reduce costs. Thanks for bearing with me. I know that that was a lot to pack in, but again, we'll share that presentation so that you can look through it at your leisure at a later point. But I'm going to quickly summarize by saying that our findings so far, none of these options are impossible. There's nothing here that's really actually that far a stretch of the imagination, all things that have been done in other communities. Some of the options really seem to go together, and so for us, it starts to become interesting that there's some options that seem like they have fewer challenges and it could be implemented relatively quickly. Those include the standardized policies and procedures, the shared training, and the shared capital purchasing. And it seems to us that those are kind of a low-hanging fruit, that would be things that should be doable in the short term. The more challenging options, that doesn't mean they're not worth doing in some cases, and in particular, the shared administration, I think, is a really promising one, but it's going to be challenging to do. The service area realignment, getting kind of all these intermunicipal agreements to allow each municipality to do work outside of its political boundary, may be promising but tricky to do. And then finally, the consolidation is a big step. All of those may be implemented later if other things prove successful, but are not really things that we would think would be immediate implementation. And then water sewer, garbage collection, parts maintenance, worth exploring, but they're beyond the scope of this project, as I mentioned. We'll treat them briefly in our final reports. Okay. So the impact analysis that we're going to do next, how does each option affect the cost and quality of services? We're going to quantify the net savings, looking at what are the anticipated ongoing costs associated with each option, and then how would they reduce costs as well, the savings that are expected? And then quality improvements, this is where studies, there's not a lot of hard numbers about the quality of highway services provided in a local municipality. In fact, there aren't even necessarily lots of data about the quality of paved roads in the village of Red Hook. And so we're going to look at what are some qualitative measures of the improvements that are delivered through these shared services to highway services, see if there's some ways to quantify that. And then finally, we'll draft some action plans to help guide the municipalities as they implement any of these options that make sense. A lot. I'm sorry to cover it so quickly to make your head spin, but that's a brief summary of what we've been up to. Does anybody have questions? Is there anything you want to pick apart here?
Sure, if you wouldn't mind, I'll go first. Could you go back to slide eight, is a note I made? I think it's where you grouped the one through four, then the next couple options.
This is the problem with the animation going backwards.
With this lineup, I would like to talk about one thing that I think is important for all of us and the public is, right now, as a village resident, we do elect the town highway superintendent, and we do fund their salary and their support staff salary, and we also fund the physical highway garage under their budget A, their A budget it's called. The town has a complicated budget with the different lines than we have on a village level. And I think for the board and for the outside folks, one through four, you seem to, then you seem to say at the end of your speech there that one through three were very feasible, four was a little more difficult. Is four, what I'm getting at is, if we're already paying certain salaries, and you were saying maybe with a half-time, full-time, half, .5 full-time equivalent, it could be feasible, my mind gets directed toward those first four. They're quite interesting, and especially since on many levels, we're already paying for that as a village resident. What Tim was getting at was also with turnover and changes and training, if there is a full-time paid inside-the-office professional out there as an asset, it might behoove us to look at that for certain things. We've done a similar thing. We took some grant money from the county and bought a software package for our planning department. Sam's out in the office, and he's done something that it's unified and given a lot more, how would you say, benefits to the village where he's got a higher-tech system and he's also got access to storage in the cloud, different things, it quantifies things a little differently. You'll see it in our reports later in the meeting. I think that same thing is out there. If we had something with a town superintendent also working, I think there's some new model out there, is what I'm saying, where I said, we happen to have a very active village board at this point in time, but it's not always the case, and having a full-time paid person out there to pick up some of the slack could be a good thing. And then sharing and purchasing planning and some huge capital equipment things, like the town just pulled like two plows a year ago for a quarter million each, I think it was, or something like that.
Yeah, and to clarify, it's number one, sorry, number two is the one that I think is trickier than the other of these first four.
Two, did you say?
Shared administration is a little trickier, but I agree, that I think it's got a lot of promise. I think one, three, and four are kind of a low-hanging fruit here that we should, you know, we're still not quite done with this, so we want to investigate what savings might come from those, because if it's $10 savings, then it's probably not worth a lot of time and energy to do. But if there's some decent savings from these and there's some improvements to the quality of service, then it'll come back from our study that these options are the ones to focus attention on.
And the shared administration, I think it gets clear to point out that the town highway superintendent won't be basically telling our highway department, our Tivoli's DPW department, what to do, but more of a way of collecting data that the village could then use for either for purchasing equipment or better provide services that we clearly provide. So not like they're taking over the administration, just kind of the data collection.
Yeah, yeah. We explain that in a lot more detail in the actual report, because it is a subtle but very important distinction, that what we're talking about in the shared administration is not that the highway superintendent starts being the boss of the village's highway superintendent. No. What we're talking about is that the town highway department does data collection, has this software system, gets the data into that software system, and then provides reports to Dan, and then provides reports to the municipal boards, so that there can be some kind of more data-driven decision-making about things related to highway. Yeah, and I think the mayor points out that there, one of the things that we look at the impact of these options and how to do these options, to remember is that a lot of this, especially where we have anything to do with the town, the town has its kind of two-tier budget structure, where there's a set of funds that deal with the whole town, and so all taxpayers in the town, including village residents, pay into that townwide tax for the Fund A and DA. DA is the highway townwide fund. And then there's the towns' outside funds, which are for taxpayers, residents outside of the villages. And so the nice thing about having that structure and having that as part of a shared services study is that when we look at things like shared administration, there's already a town mechanism for charging for some of those things or for shared capital purchasing. The town has that A fund, and instead of making certain purchases out of an outside fund, it could make them out of the A fund if that makes sense for the overall community. And so if there's an option here that saves everyone money and that we can figure out a way to improve the quality of services, that's an interesting way to implement that.
And currently, an A fund too, not just for the highway administration, but for all of the administration in the town building.
Right.
So the secretaries, clerks, that kind of stuff is all being shared by all three municipalities to the A fund.
Any other questions?
You guys good?
Great. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thanks, Tim.
A lot of work.
All right. We'll let him remove. Could you hand me the plug to the computer?
Who's on my agenda?
I didn't take it. I'll share mine. Thanks. Ooh, could you move the? Thanks. Thank you. I'm good, yeah. All right, we'll move on. We've broken out of our sequence. I think what we'll do, we'll go to some department reports, but we'll break, let's move to water. We'll let Steve Zarchak go, if you want to dig your report out, Steve, and I'll pause for a minute. We have our engineer from CT Mail in the audience, too, so we'll get him out next. Steve, you ready there?
Sure. In the month of November, the water treatment plant pumped 6 million, 42,000 gallons of water per daily average of 228,000 gallons. In November 13, the plant pumped 6 million, 485,000 gallons for a daily average of 216,000 gallons. The plant used 55 gallons of hyperchloride. Two samples were sent to the lab for bacterial testing and were returned with negative result. One hydrant was replaced on Mexico Road near the eastern end of Gun Ridge Road, bringing the total to three hydrants replaced this year. For building maintenance, I still have not...
We'll skip that. We'll let Robert go. We'll stay on water for now, okay? We'll go back to you later. Like, we always joke, CT Mail travels to be here for our meetings, and they're also, they do cost us money in some way, so we like to get them out as soon as we can. Two things I thought we'd talk about, Robert with the block grant and the well drilling, and then phase two and whatever else is on your mind.
All right, so I'll kind of give you an update on the...
Yep, you're good.
Update on the capital projects. The block grant that you mentioned is what we were calling a well 15, where the village doesn't actually have 15 wells, but...
It may not be on, Robert, if you, I thought we left it on, but there's a little black switch there. It'll take a second. No, all right, not good. We can hear you.
So I should have the folks on TV, but I guess... So our project that we, that was started, I guess over a year ago now, we're coming to the end of that. Well 15, as we identified it, has been drilled, tested it. We haven't fully, it's not fully functioning right now, but it's, we're sort of, right now, comfortably can tell you it's going to give us an extra 100,000 gallons a day of water. So I think that's a pretty positive step there.
Have we finished the 72-hour test on that, Bob?
Yeah. Yeah, so my report's based on that, that we're going to get at least, when we're all said and done, it's going to give us that much. The overall rating of the well field, if you remember, is not based on individual wells, because if you take each well individually, you can pump more water, you know, it makes it look like you can pump more water than you really can. Since they're all straws into the same bowl, you have to do the 72-hour tests with all the wells on at the same time to get a true reading.
And that's at 100,000 gallons per day?
No, 100,000 gallons per day is of the individual well that was just drilled.
I know, but with the bowl concept as the background?
No, no, by itself.
Okay.
Plus 100 gallons per day and 100 gallons per minute.
No well can do that, right?
100,000 gallons.
100,000 gallons, which is roughly like just shy of maybe 80 or so, right? 70-something.
So we're looking at, going just to go back to wells five and six, originally this grant was used for, those were high-yield wells, too, about...
Fifty. Each one was a 50-gallon, very well, historical.
And the wells we closed up, two and eight, they were low-yield, about 30.
Well, when we tested on one, it was 12, and one was 18.
That's why we abandoned those and chose to go with well 15.
So we, you know, I guess what we figured kind of panned out, drilling this well gave you, you know, we don't have the exact number, you know, but it's probably twice as much water for a lower cost and a better quality of water. The water qualities were taken, what we call part fives. The water qualities were taken, what we call Part Fives, which is the full list of parameters for drinking water well. So then samples have been taken and are, you know, are waiting for results to come back from the lab.
Good.
So that seems to be pretty successful.
So you're going to make your connection soon or how does that happen?
Yeah, so we're, the contractor's waiting for some parts and pieces to come in because he wants to show up with everything and do it, you know, make that connection. So that's going to happen, this time of year, got to worry about weather. So in the next two weeks, well, that connection will happen.
So the electrical log connected or?
The wires are pulled from one place to the other, but, you know, the physical pump is not, it's not hooked up.
So you still have to connect it to the monitoring system and the well?
That has to be done too, right?
And all that stuff, right? And then we'll get a total amount of open pump or produce out of that well field, all wells?
Right, we got to run that test.
And when Robert stood up, what we're talking about is a block grant funded project here, so it's some new faces in the audience there. It's county and federal money for, we got a whole little-
It's actually 113, I think.
Pardon? Yeah.
13 money?
Yeah.
150,000 dollars, I believe, the project was like 162. We had short term financing packages that we approved, Board of Trustees, who sounds very bank and low interest rate, that would supplement the issue.
Right.
And we were close.
So that's good news.
Yeah.
What else you have?
So the other thing is phase two, you know, it's going to, we're going to have a busy year here. Phase two on the design end of things, so on my end of things, it's getting pretty busy. So, you know, we're starting to produce drawings and ultimately, you know, we've got basically the kickoff meeting with rule development. So we're looking at a drawing package, plans and specs submitted to the regulatory agencies, submitted to rule development, get, you know, their reviews and comments and, you know, so then we go to bid. So that's what we're, that's what we're going to do. It's probably a bit of work to get there, but-
It was interesting too, it's the Southwest Quarters Phase Two basically, and so we, it's been surveyed and we now know where our right of ways are and I believe we gave you the GPS survey of all of our tree inventory, so that it'll be put on maps as well and so we know where the trees are located, where the right of ways and where the new water-
Right, that's step one, is establish existing conditions, right? So, you know, what's there now and where the mountain watering is, where the trees are, right of ways, where the water services are. So that's what's happening.
Yeah, and the funding side of that, this is the 3.8 million dollar USDA project, Phase Two, and we have our short term, short term money from E F C, which is being released, what, January 8th is when they will start with the conclusionary paperwork and then we'll be able to start tapping that to pay the engineer and so forth, so timing that out that way too.
Yep.
All right, then, I don't know what I made, I don't want to blindside you, but we're also working on that backflow cross connection project. You have a quick update on that?
All right, so we developed the draft, just a little background, one of the things that's required from the help department to be implemented into your building code and village code is your, a way to protect your water supply from contamination that could flow backwards through your connections. So that's the cross connection backflow prevention program. So we drafted a plan and it's being reviewed by your, by your legal counsel so that it can be incorporated ultimately into your village code. So that's, that's the goal of that.
And to explain what he means there, certain uses, certain occupancies, so to speak, are deemed to be, could be hazardous to a backflow situation where a local user, you would want their water coming backwards into our municipal pipe system. So this is set up to get that addressed and corrected. And what it means in the end, certain businesses will need an annual inspection by a certified inspector and we'll be working on that once we get legal. We'd have to do public hearings and different things on that, but it's something we will do in the near future.
And the information line, the information that we're talking about included in my 13 report, so it gives you some of the listings of the types of business that we're doing, also the agreement with the engineer for their services and project year graph.
Okay, that was, you did that already or you got it?
That's in, in my, in the attachments.
When we get him-
It's coming up.
When we go live with Brett, we'll be getting that.
A little bit more detail.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess two thoughts, what we're setting up now is with the project coming this live, we'll be meeting once a week with the engineers. Other board members are welcome to come in whenever they want, but it's usually during the workday hours. We're setting up an ongoing, once a week, two hour, Friday meeting type of thing because it's a big project and it's three times as big as Phase One, so be a lot of details.
Right, that's, so also we programmed, you know, we'll have the weekly progress meetings so that, you know, you have a chance to go step by step until we get to fully developed drawings and specs.
Do we anticipate one in the spring sometime, or is it April?
Bid time.
About the bid.
Right.
We're still cleaning up some paperwork from USDA.
Yeah, USDA and paperwork means a lot, means a lot of paperwork. They gave us a request, be sure we gave them a CRC form the other day and we were all looking at each other. Okay, we'd filled out so many forms for Phase One, okay, does anybody remember what the CRC form was? So we called, we called the USDA rep, they're very helpful, and he said, oh, that's similar to the S A M form. Oh, okay. But, so we're working on that, but it's, it's not a germane monstrous form as far as the financing, it's something to attest that we're not a subsidiary of like Abu Dhabi or something like that, and so we're a straight local municipality. But it's kind of funny, that's how you work with them, what that's all about. But they do give us the opportunity to do this work, which is great, so. Anyway, any other questions for Robert while you got him up there? All right, thank you, Robert.
Thanks.
Okay. Let's see. Looks like I can go here, I have a police report. Later on tonight, we'll go to executive session to update and I think finalize the police contract, but we'll talk about that in executive first. As far as Red Hook Village Police Department, for the month of November, they're reporting 179 incidents, breaks out 109 in the village of Red Hook, 67 in the town of Red Hook. And Tivoli got in there with three. As far as traffic tickets, 42 in the village and 46 in the town. Arrests, total of 25, nine in the village and 16 in the town. And I talked to Patrick because the town part looks a little heavier in the relationship there as far as the numbers, 16 arrests in the town and nine in the village. But in the month of November, the county and the state promoted some grant funded DWI checkpoints and so forth with the, you might have seen it in the regular press too, but it was, they were out there doing some traffic and DWI related stuff, so they pick up different equipment and fractions and things and some DWIs, so there are, they're not all DWIs in that number of course, but they were out in the town quite a bit more that month than the normal schedule. But that being said-
Hey, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, in the village, here in the village on the 25th.
25th.
Yeah, they had hazmat incident on Elizabeth Street.
Who's the they?
It's the police.
Oh.
The police responded to a hazmat incident.
I don't know the answer, let me find it on the page for you, hazmat, Elizabeth Street. I did not ask the sergeant what that was, but I can find out for you.
Okay.
And I'll check with him tomorrow and let you know.
Okay, thanks.
All right, let's see. On my list, looks like Mr. Trustee Trapp for Planning and Zoning Update.
Thank you, Ed. A few things going on in the planning zoning world that we, planning board, you know, I guess has to look forward to. I guess Anderson Commons is sort of coming back to life, they're working on that in the town, there's some issues down there. I think we're pretty comfortable in the village with where we are with most of that. Think it'll, as it progresses, we'll find out what the involvement for the planning board in the village is about. Noelwood is coming along very nice, I see a lot of inspections down there at Noelwood, it's coming along pretty good. It's looking good from the road. There were some issues about changing the entry and some of the stuff along the road from mixed use to commercial, I mean to residential completely, and I think I heard that they're probably going to just dispense with that idea and just go with the original intent, which was retail on the bottom and residential on the top. I think it was a nice mix and we worked really hard to get that, at that time, set like that, so I'm glad the intent of the zone is being upheld at that point, so. And the planning board is, is working through C V S as well. There are a lot of considerations that they, that they have when they're working with the C V S. They're adjacent to historic site, they've got, you know, interesting traffic configurations to try and come up, you know, with the C V S they're comfortable with and just the look of the building, you know, we were pretty particular in my time and I hope that they're probably considering a lot of the same things. It's a difficult project to work through, I think they've had it for a while and I speak with Mark from time to time and I, I give him no direction, only direct answer, like procedural questions for him and he's, I think he's, you know, working on like a critical path to move forward on that and that would be, that would be nice, it's going to be a good project for the village. And then that's going to leave the old C V S for redevelopment, which could be a very interesting project as well. I, I hope it works. Let's see, oh, K Z E Christmas party tonight, I mean tomorrow night, anybody interested in a toy and you can show up. It's a lot of fun. Professor Louie, I think, is playing again.
Right.
Yeah, so it should be interesting. Let's see, in November, there were five building permits issued, no C V Os, four certificates of compliance, two municipal searches, and we've got, the planning board had a little bit of business, they had a signed application in front of them, a public hearing for a lot line alteration, and the C V S that I spoke of briefly was, the public hearing was tabled to December 11th, which is coming up very quickly.
Extended.
Yeah, yeah, it was, well, they've got it listed as tabled to, but yeah, it's still open and they will hear additional comment, I assume, on the 11th, which is this Thursday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, zoning board again, George? Always bridesmaid, huh?
I'm going to give you this one.
Good for you. Let's see, lot line alteration, very good. And we have, I think Ed mentioned last time and this time briefly, the municity software that we're using produces a new report, which is kind of, kind of cool. I like the format of the report here, it's real clear. So that's kind of nice. And in November, we took in $497.50, always slows up a little bit around this time of year. Something that I started working on, I chatted with Ed about and we were, I guess initially in one of our block grants, we had talked about possible security in and around the well fields and the pump houses, we talked about fencing and Ed and I then started rambling on about security cams and things like that. And it's not really a possibility for a number of reasons right now, but I've been looking through Homeland Security and some of the other websites that have funding opportunities trying to see what there is. And it's kind of difficult because it's so much information out there to pile through, to read the specs for each grant application and add an opportunity. But at this present point, they have a little form that you can fill out and it's called a threat vulnerability assessment for your water supplies, so I'm just kind of going through that. And when I get it sort of drafted out and blocked out, I'll shoot it over to you and let you see what you think about that, just to, you know, should it, I think it's going to be a little interesting. And that's it.
Thank you, Jay. It looks like, why don't we jump to trustee ours on your report?
Materials management, in the month of November, we sold $3,247.50 in garbage tags and we paid out $1,156.21. We had 10.59 tons of garbage and 6.97 tons of single stream recycling. So this is pretty average, a pretty average month. We will have an e-waste recycling day on Saturday, January 17th, 2015, at the town transfer station. Last year, we gathered 18,000 pounds of electronic waste. This is for like old televisions, old laptops, you know, we tried to do it around the holidays so that you get something new and then you can recycle the old thing. This is held in conjunction with Bard College's Center for Civic Engagement's Day of Service, Martin Luther King Day. We do have some Bard volunteers, but we could use more, all hands on deck. There's some lifting and wrapping objects involved, so if you're interested in helping out, if you're a student who needs community service hours or anything like that, you can contact myself or Ed through the village clerk's office, we'd love to have you, it's a little cold, but we'd love to have the help. Events, yesterday, the historic Red Hook held a Dutch Christmas open house at the Elmendorf with live local music, cookies, mulled cider and fresh baked bread from their beehive oven. It was just one of those sweet little events that you just, you walk in and you just smile, it's just nice. We decided to do something different this year, we tacked on our winter fest to the Elmendorf's event. I kind of liked doing that, maybe we'll do that again, because that way it was more of a whole day of festivities instead of just one short little event. We had carolers, bird feeder making, characters and hayrides. It was cold, of course, but I think the turnout was good and the trees up at Memorial Park, two trees at Memorial Park, so that was nice. Huge thank you to Kim Gomez, Kathy Trebel, Lisa Glick and her middle school carolers. And who was the one who drove the hayrides?
Ken Anderson and family.
Ken Anderson and family. So there you go, I just want to give a shout out, Tivoli is doing their winter fest this Saturday, they're going to have a craft fair from 12 to 5 and their winter fest will start at 3. They have like a horse carriage ride, they have bonfire music, Santa of course. The Tivoli Library is doing a clothing and Christmas decoration swap this Saturday as well, from 10 to 2 with a $5 suggested donation and you can kind of go crazy and swap clothes and Christmas decorations. So there you go. And as far as we're concerned, our events take a little bit of a break in January, we're going to host an event planning open house in February, we're going to try to get Bard involved, any other people who want to help us with event planning with the hope that maybe down the road, someone would take over hardscrabble and winter fest and spring roll. And it's just also nice to have some new blood and, because it's mostly us, and we're fine doing it, but it would just be nice to have, you know, some fresh faces. So I'm going to figure that out, we'll have some food, we'll make it a little fun, that way people can come and learn what we do and how to do it and, you know, be interested if they want to. So I will have the date for you of that at our next meeting.
Yeah, we have the rather prejudiced position that some of our street festivals and community celebrations helped reignite the interest in the businesses in Red Hook and it sort of set the tone for a lot of things to happen. I quite firmly believe that and changed some of the nature of the merchants, we have a lot more retail out there now and it's all been good. And on the e-waste part, Jen mentioned need for volunteers, but one thing, we'll put in our newsletter too, we're talking with Cindy and everybody, but what the village of Red Hook offers, like he was saying in the shared services presentation, we'll offer our people a curbside, it's not every resident, but those that would be infirm or elderly or somehow not really able to schlep the old whatever out of the basement or the attic or even the living room into a car to get, what happened is the transfer station of the town acts as a gathering point, so you have to be able to get it there. The town waives the admission fee for that particular day, but, but we offer something, well, we'll get a highway vehicle and some volunteers and by pre-registration only, if those folks that really can't physically deal with moving it and lifting it, we'll come and get it out of your house, put it on a truck and take it away. The funny part of the story is, we might have talked about- The funny part of the story is, we might have talked about it a year ago, but some people took us up on that. And remember the old projection screen TVs that were bigger than like two refrigerators? They were out. We had to get those on to the trucks. It was like, oh my goodness, it was, I think we had to pick up two of those things and they're not that heavy, but they're just really big and really awkward. It's like, oh my God. And then when we drove up, we had to get them off and shrink wrap them and ship them out. But like Jen said, 18,000 pounds of e-waste, that's huge. And we will, in our newsletter, circulate what's allowable, what's not. Really, anything that's got a wire and electronic is allowable, but we don't take air conditioners or refrigerators, things that are more appliance-y things, it's more electronics. But it's a good thing and we've been assured, it's a company Bard uses where they actually do recycle the metals and the valuable parts of it. They don't just throw it in a landfill somewhere different from us, so it's a good thing. Thank you, Jen. Let's see, I think we interrupted Steve, we wanted to talk about some facilities there when you were in your ward.
Oh, I just, I hadn't received an update from the company that finished the roof.
Actually.
And I wondered if any of you had.
No, I wrote to them this morning, as a matter of fact. What Steve's talking about, we had some ice damming at roofline conjunction point of old roof and new roof and we got that corrected about, what, two, three weeks ago? Not too long ago. I haven't seen a written report from them or what he did. I wasn't here the day he was up there. He got it done in a day, which is a good sign, I guess, but we'll get that. And then we did, as a village, concur, we're working back with Central Hudson on our supply of electricity, so that was initiated to start. Let's see. We'll now move to the detailed report of the deputy mayor. Are you ready, sir?
Yes, sir. Let's start with the village green monthly report. The current balances of the village green committee related budget accounts. Our follows community beautification, we have $2,503.34. Shade tree contractual, $3,761.30. In the village green checking account, we have $3,536.88. Annual fall planning took place on November 8th. Volunteers met at Veterans Memorial Park and trees were dedicated to Frank Knutlock. Actually, the tree was purchased and planted by the Red Hook Central School Board. And we also dedicated a tree to village highway foreman Dan Street for his assistance to the village green throughout his years of service. We planted nine trees at various sites throughout the village. You can refer to my October 2014 letter report for the exact site locations and all the committee members participated and Mayor Blindell also drilled the water tank and did some work, which is great. And Steve Evans and Shubhikin prepared lunch for all the volunteers after planking. The village green committee is currently seeking volunteers to serve on the committee. Residents interested in serving may contact the village clerk's office or myself. There are currently two bench locations remaining without dedication plaques. Village residents can purchase a plaque for $125. Proceeds from the sale of the plaque should be deposited in a dedicated village green committee checking account and used to pay for the purchases and installation of the plaque. Their remaining funds will be used for future village enhancement projects. Again, contact the village clerk's office for more information. So the 23 benches, two left, and this would make good Christmas presents for somebody.
How many are left, Brent?
Two.
Two, all right.
We have a location at Tresco Bank and one at the Emporium, the north side of the Emporium. The village Red Hook County Department monthly report. Fall brush and leaf pickup will continue through mid-December, actually December 19th will be the final date for this year for picking up leaf and brush curbside, so that's actually not too far away, a week from Friday. Residents are reminded to place the leaves, if you have it wrapped already, in rows, not piles, and separate the brush, strip the trees, etc. on the leaves. The village's snow ordinances apply in effect through March 31st of 2015. No parking is permitted on village streets from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and on New York State highways from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM during the same period. When snow and ice removal operations underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any respective police agency. Costs associated with vehicle towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. H&amp;M Towing Enterprises LLC was awarded the contract to tow and store vehicles that are in violation of the village's snow ordinances. Vehicles will be towed and stored at H&amp;M lot at 7309 South Broadway for a fee of $110 per vehicle with three days free storage. After the three days, a fee of $25 will be charged per day for vehicles not picked up. Owners of the vehicles towed can contact the Red Hook Village Police Department or the Red Hook Village Clerk's Office for more contact information and directions, I guess, on how to get there. It's pretty easy to find. Residents are also reminded to remove basketball hoops, sports, and other equipment from the sides of village streets to allow for snow plowing and snow storage. The village will not be responsible for damaged equipment to be made near the streets during the snow plowing season. The owner and indoor occupant of every building and lot in the village within the joint sidewalk shall remove snow and ice within 24 hours of a snowstorm. At the discretion of the village board of trustees, the village highway department will remove snow and ice left unclear at a cost of $20 per minute or foot. This cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. And these are all based on village local laws. Letters received from Joseph Hurley, the New York State DOT Traffic Control Unit Supervisor on November 24th. This letter was in response to the Red Hook Village Board of Trustees Resolution and Letter of September 8, 2014 regarding the Route 9, Route 199 traffic light. The DOT completed a formal investigation, which included several field visits by the Traffic Investigation Unit and Traffic Signal Operations Group. The DOT concluded by recommending the following. The exclusive four-way pedestrian phase cannot be removed since a small number of people of all ages use the pedestrian phase to move diagonally across the intersection. And by removing this exclusive pedestrian phase, the DOT considers this will put the pedestrians at greater risk. The pedestrian clearance time, currently with the time allotted determined to be too long, will be adjusted and corrected. The Route 199 phase is currently being skipped intermittently, causing longer backups on both legs of Route 199. The existing traffic controller will be replaced with a modern, more efficient unit, which should correct the phase skipping issue for Route 199. Currently, there's a broken traffic loop detector on the northbound Route 9 approach, so the phase is defaulting the maximum green time for every cycle, causing the traffic on Route 199 to needlessly be delayed. This broken loop or detector will be repaired so the green time can be distributed in a more efficient manner based on need. And the village board will continue reviewing the DOT's recommendation and determine if these are sufficient, require additional actions, and we'll keep going and pushing them to schedule these repairs and hopefully that'll fix, or at least help remediate some of the traffic problems that we have here caused by that light. Scrap metal was sold on October 3rd and pigment was received by the village on November 3rd in the amount of $310.94. Total revenue generated for fiscal year 2014-15 is $1,386.59. And I guess at some point, since this is the six-month period, we can transfer the revenue side over to this one. Proceeds from this program go toward purchasing tools and equipment through the village highway, water, and materials management departments. Residents and businesses interested in donating scrap metal can contact the highway department at 758-8600 or the village clerk's office. The highway department will also assist property owners and residences by picking up the scrap metal upon request. Let's see if I can add a point now. In your copy, I do include the letter from the DOT, dated November 24th, also the proposal for major towing. Check for the receipts for the scrap metal. And we just submit, get a letter, also, I don't know, Edwin, you want to talk about this, but from the Tower of Red Hook Highway Department.
Okay, hey, go ahead now. Go ahead.
Do you think, want to talk about this later then?
I'd say go now if you don't mind.
All right. So we've been debating this for a while here on the board, but we've received basically an agreement for 2015 for sand and salt. We share this service with the town, I believe specifically, but at Central Schools also contribute to this. The town currently bills us for this material, which I believe is on state contract, but the town also adds a 3% administrative charge to this request. So what we just learned, or basically have been learning through the shared services study, is that through the A fund in the town, the village residents do pay for administrative charges, so that we're questioning the 3% administrative surcharge that the town is adding on top of our solid sand materials, but also our fuel charges as well. It does add up to quite a bit of money, so.
If I could jump in, like Brent said, he introduced it properly there. On November 18th, the town sent us a letter and we do share services already and one of the things is, we buy state contract pricing, fuel, and salt and sand materials with them. But then they're adding a handling or administration fee, not so much for the physically moving of the goods from, we can see, it's more for the paperwork administration, the way this is worded. So I'd like the board's consideration and thought, I'd like to go talk to the town and say, look, we're already paying the highway superintendent's salary and the part-time clerk's salary.
Plus the bookkeeper's.
Is it really costing you that much more? If you take the budget lines, the reason I threw that up on the wall is, if you look at, we have snow and related materials, you know, sand and salt, like we said, we have fuel in a couple of different aspects of our budget, highway fuel, and then we have snow and garbage. So it's about 28 grand a year we purchase jointly with the town, so 3% of that number is what we're talking about. It's not huge money, but it might be more the principle of the matter. So I'd like the board's thought and discussion and then I think whatever that might be, I think I'd like to go to the town and say, look, 3% is a little bit rough for sending us the bill, so to speak. I see some heads nodding. I think, in my opinion, they order a little more for us, which is great. Somebody has to intake it and monitor it being unloaded and then when we go pick it up, records are kept. I don't know that we're being unrealistic by saying 3% is a little rough. And like we said, shared services goes both ways. We don't mind paying something, but maybe there's something in between. Any thoughts on the board? See Steve nodding his head a little bit over there.
No, I'd say that we, you know, we authorize you to go talk to them.
Yes, I think we're paying.
We're paying for it through the A fund.
Yeah, so, all right. That being said, I'll go do that. Thank you, Brent.
The Intervent School Task Force, the Red Hook Infrastructure Monthly Report. Start with the Red Hook Sewer Project. The New York State Environmental Administration Corporation issued the final 2015 and 2018 planning on November 1st, 2014. The village Red Hook's proposed low-pressure sewer system and wastewater treatment plant project scored above the funding line. Forty-seven wastewater, which are clean water projects in New York State, this is a project outside of New York City, scored above the funding line. The funding line was drawn for projects with a score of 38 points. The Red Hook projects scored 41, so we were, I did submit you the first three pages of the IEP and we're on topic at page three, so we're uniquely qualified for, at best, we could be eligible for an EFC Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which includes 0% interest financing. So this is the beginning of finding funding for this project, either through the USDA, through various sources, Rural Community Assistance Partnership. We're looking everywhere for more money to help bring the cost down. We haven't yet figured out a target cost, so again, this is the first step and we're in better shape than we were last time as far as the EFC goes. But we, they do not have the stimulus package out this year. But there is one good shining ray of hope, is that the state of New York received a $5.1 billion settlement, bank settlements and private investors for their mortgage loan stuff, so that rumor has it, and this is going to be taught out on state level when they start preparing their budgets in mid-January, they're looking at using that money for infrastructure improvements, highways, roads, water and sewer projects. So we're in good position to receive, hopefully that goes that route, some more money for that. The proposed $4.9 million Red Hook Sewer District will extend from the northern boundary at Old Post Road to Red Hook Commons and the Emporium on South Broadway and from Church Street on West Market Street to the Red Hook Electric on East Market Street. The proposed district contains 224 benefit units. Three alternative systems were investigated in the engineer report, an all-gravity sewer with large pumping stations, an all-subject tanker fluid pressure sewer system, our step system, and a combination of step and gravity sewers. The step system was found to be the least expensive, most easily installed with minimal restoration cost, and provide the best alternative to meet the goals and constraints of the existing program and site restrictions. Existing treatment plant at Red Hook Commons will be incorporated and modularly expanded for the Red Hook Village Sewer System. Additional land is available at this site to expand the treatment plant as future needs require. Various zones of assessments and district formation process will be investigated and public meetings, stakeholders' meetings, and committee meetings will be held to educate and inform the public as progress continues and more information becomes available. So this was our first step. And the second attempt. And on the Red Hook Village water projects, Robert talked briefly about these, the Red Hook Village Water Project Phase 2, we had a meeting on December 2nd at the village building with USDA, CT Mail, and the village of Red Hook. Phase 2 of the Red Hook project, water project will provide for the improvements to the village's water distribution system, which includes water mains, connections, fire hydrants, and street restoration in the village's southwest residential quadrant, and replacement of the existing elevated storage tank on Tower Road with a surface-bound storage tank at the Fiennes Lane Wellfield Site. The estimated project cost of $3.8 million will be financed by USDA Rural Development Loan at 3.25% interest rate for a 38-year term. 2013, Robert mentioned that before, a step test was conducted on the new well, 15, on November 20th. This test verifies flow rates of water produced from the well. The test started at 30 gallons per minute being pumped and increased incrementally to 16, 80, 100, then to 120 gallons per minute, which is the highest rate tested. The new well was approved for 100 gallons per minute and the level of water did not drop at this rate. As Robert had also mentioned, the 72-hour test was performed on December 1st through the 4th. And so I'm anxious to see how much yield we're actually getting from all of our wells at this point. And also mentioned briefly, adopt backflow prevention cross-connection policy, we reviewed on November 21st. Application installation verification forms, lists of properties requiring cross-connection valves, fee schedules, inspection schedules, process description, and required documentation for the applicant submission. And lists of certified inspectors will be produced and reviewed by the village board of trustees, hopefully sometime in December. An estimate for legal services to draft the Red Hook Village zoning law and local law amendments to include the cross-connection policy was submitted by the law offices of Rottenhausen &amp; Schall on November 22, 2014, and the board has a copy of that letter. With increased water and storage capacity provided by the various water projects, the village is required by New York State law to provide a certain level of protection of the municipal water supply resource. The village is responsible for the protection of the public potable water distribution system from cross-connections due to backflow or back siphonage, pollutants, or contamination to water service connections. The purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines and enforcement procedures to protect the public water supply by isolating possible pollution or contamination within the village's internal water distribution system. the village's internal water distribution system. Without isolation as described and enforced through this policy, contamination could conceivably backflow into the potable water system. The community, this is, the next phase will be the 2015 Community Development Block Grant. The Community Development Block and Advisory Committee's review and funding decisions were supposed to be made November 10th through 21st. I did call up the county and ask, and sometime in December that will be released. The draft action plan should be released any day now for a 30-day public comment period then. The village of Reddick did submit an application on October 17th for the amount of $52,372 to fund the reconstruction of a sidewalk section on the southern boundary of the village on the west side of Route 9, and a new sidewalk installation, a new sidewalk in front of the Reddick Firehouse. On the task force side, the task force met on November 8th, 14th, 21st at the Reddick Town Hall, and we discussed the following items, and we reviewed the proposed Hawthorne Farms Traditional Neighborhood Residential Development with representatives from Kirkchow Properties, and we reviewed the proposed road specs, housing types, parking designations, sidewalk requirements, and potential water service supply. We also looked at the R.1.5 ag uses and the TND maximum square footages for the TND cottage housing type, and we reviewed the draft regulations for the new construction, alterations, additions, and demolition of structures within the town of Reddick's Hudson River Historic District.
Hey Brent, what's an R.1.5 ag use? What's that?
Eighth and a half.
Eighth and a half.
I know the...
There's, the town has a right to farm law, so there's some talk about chickens and roosters right now, so we're just looking at conformity with that, with the provisions of ag and markets, and also the town's right to farm provision. So right now, you can provide agricultural uses in any district within the town of Reddick. It's a town, right? It's not considered farm necessarily, that, up to ag and markets, right? There's a bunch of stuff I put in there.
Did you say you're going to talk about the types of businesses that backflow? Do you have that in this report, or...
Yeah, I attached it. Sort of attached it.
Okay, can I see it? What properties? I see it in mind.
Do you want to go through them all?
Yeah, maybe if you, we could...
These are the type of properties that must install backflow prevention devices, metal plating, a lot of these we don't have here in the village, but metal plating operations, photoproces and facilities, laundries and dry cleaners, commercial car washes, greenhouses, hospitals, clinics, laboratories, including veterinarian hospitals, medical and dental offices, funeral parlors, food processing plants, and meat or fish packers, dye plants, paper processors, auto repair shops, gruvers, canneries, exterminators, large residential grannies, with treated water boilers, sewage treatment plants or handling facilities, premises with multiple water service lines, premises with roof tanks and elevated storage lines, canneries, shipyards, and marinas, schools, and colleges, food processing facilities, nursing homes, barber shops and beauty salons, and properties with in-ground irrigation sprinklers. Those are the ones we'd be looking at.
So of that list, looks like we might have about 10 of those bullet points.
Yeah, maybe that's it. And so what Robert had provided us was a list of links to different websites for more information on that, so that was offered by the trustees. One more. The Reddick Town Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are liaisons, representing the village on this. EDC meeting was held on November 12th at the Reddick Village Building, and we discussed the next steps to further implement the Reddick events calendar. Lists of Reddick businesses are being assembled, and invitations from the EDC to local businesses, civic and cultural organizations are being prepared to participate in the events calendar. The EDC, or Economic Development Committee, prioritized master list of projects was reviewed and amended. The Community Preservation Fund, Fawnland Protection Advisory Committee, which I'm a Reddick Village representative and also a member, there were no meetings held during the month of November. The Town of Reddick Zoning Review Committee, I'm also a representative of the village on that one, and also a member, no meetings were held on November, during November. And the Town of Reddick, the Village of Reddick and typically Shared Services Committee just had a presentation by a leaderman on that. I think everything I listed did cover, and there were no other meetings held in the month of November. And Libraries Transforming Communities, the Public Innovators Cohort, which I'm a member of. Reddick Library was one of 10 libraries nationwide to receive a grant from the American Libraries Association, with sponsorship from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And this month, we had a, there's a weapon article called Calibrating Community Conventions planned to conduct with the 10 national cohorts. This was held on November 19th, and the Reddick Cohort met at Bart Collison Pacific Gate to talk with the other 10 library members.
You said the 19th? Pierce says 18th.
The 18th, sorry. And just going back real quick to CPF, the Community Preservation Fund, I requested from the Town of Reddick to submit monthly reports for the village's review and also for the public information of the balance in the community preservation fund, and this fund can be used for village projects, including restoration projects, including cultural resources, wetland protections, well field protection. There's a whole list, it's got the primary purposes, to preserve farmland. And since the villages do not have that much farmland, there are other options available for preservation. Again, this is for preservation and not for restoration. And that's it.
Thank you, Brent. Next order business I'm putting up on...
Do you have a question for Brent?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
On the state letter to us about that, about the traffic light?
Yeah.
Do we know if they're, if they fixed anything yet?
I do, actually. Ask a question, I'll see if I can answer it.
You know, one thing that hasn't been fixed, and that's, that's the loop sensor, and they said that's buried under the pavement, and they would have to dig up the pavement. And that's not going to happen, they said, anytime soon.
You want a finished question?
I would bug it immediately.
So, so we're just going to have to live with it?
Well, I got more info, because the same question hit me a couple days ago, so I picked up the phone and talked to, was it Joe Hurley, whoever signed the bottom there? He said that the second bullet in Brent's, in the letter there that Brent referenced, I buried it in my pile here, they have come and changed certain sequencing, coding, mechanical components in the signal part, in the brains part of it. I asked him, "Well, what is changing a loop in a highway involve?" We would like to believe at first that it's a major excavation of a busy thoroughfare, which is almost impossible, especially in winter. He said, "No, no, it's not that bad, that when you see that caulk seam around, like if you look closely at the highway there, you'll see a groove, they can actually chip out the caulk, they don't need summer warm, major highway construction time weather." He said, "They've got it." That part is problematic, though, because, he said, "It's subject to funding, budget funding, from the state of New York, and they have a bunch of loops across their region, whatever we are, 8, to do." And I said, "Well, what can we do to put our loop on the top of the loop, and top of the queue?" And I suggested, and I did this already, he said, "Talk to the state." So I reached out to Cahill's office and forwarded him the DOT letter that we have, and said, you know, they told us they did take care of the more easily fixable ones, but the loop seems to be a little bit beyond, not just their schedule, but their budget from the state, and so I haven't heard back from the Assemblyperson's office yet, but I did that this week, it could be this week, last week.
I still have to discuss, you know, what would be the original request to them.
The Point 1, the four-way stop.
Instead of four-way, do the two-way. Because they've been, I don't know, this was done about 20 years ago, under a different administration, against the recommendation of the DOT, and claiming now, there are some people that use that crossing that, but still seeing results happen down. So I think we should maybe talk with the DOT at some point and see what, make the best solution we can get.
My thought there, like you mentioned in your, one of your reports, maybe at a workshop we could kick that around a little bit. What we're talking about is that they don't want to change the four-way stop, is their official response, so... But like Brent said, historically, they've told us that that was instituted because of the village's logic years and years ago, but now they're saying they don't want to change it, so... But I think we could kick that around a little more and get some input.
Have they replaced the control itself?
Yeah, they said they did a lot. I don't know if anybody has any anecdotal from the audience, but I don't know if I'm hoping I see it, but it seemed less crazy out there the past few days to me. I don't know, have anybody seen anything?
Today, the traffic was backed all the way up.
Was it? Okay, so...
All the way back to Stewarts.
Maybe I'm seeing what I want to see then. But Stewarts, Stewarts is far. Yeah, it's a little far.
Yeah, from the latter line, the problem, that was on 199, seemed like Route 9 is pretty packed, and we're still seeing a lot of traffic going through the residential side streets trying to skirt that light, so if the timing's been changed, I haven't seen any improvement, either traffic coming through the neighborhoods or reduction of queuing up on the light.
Hurley did say they've been out, not him personally, but whatever the work crew is. But we could workshop, workshop that up a little more. Well, they put on the screens, half tongue in cheek, is each of us, I think on a Sunday, Controller De Napoli releases this audit reports of when he does various municipalities, fire companies, school districts. He's very good at self-promotion, but they're also really interesting to read in that they do give us a lot of food for thought, and that, quite frankly, over the last two or three years, a lot of the changes we've made here are based on reading audits and recommendations from the Controller's Office. One of them is, we are, even though the court is managed by a judge and his own staff, the village board has some oversight in the sense that we have to ask for and get an independent audit of the court, the justice court in the village. What I handed off, we get one every year, and we have to file it with the Controller's Office on our behalf. We use an outside auditor, CPA Lori Doty, who we have to pay her, you know, to do it. She gave a cover letter, and essentially, there was no negative finding. One was minor, that each judge has their own checking account for their fines and their bail money and so forth, and essentially, the basis of her audit is to test, to make sure that when the money comes in, it's properly taken to the right bank account in a timely fashion. Courts have all sorts of timelines to get the money out of the building and over to the bank accounts. I've read through it, you can see where she finds the revenue to match the expenses and the balances, it all matches up. She had one recommendation, which we can pass to the court, probably is a defunct bank account still in the late Justice Griffith's name, which has to be dealt with. It's nothing you as a board or me as a mayor deal with, it's, we have to just direct that to court. But what we have to do is, the state of New York, the Controller's Office, and the Division of Criminal Justice in particular, they ask that we look this over and then have a resolution that we reviewed it and accept the findings. It's essentially, if they found a negative problem, we would have to do something, of course. But if, I don't know if you had a chance to look through it, but the columns all match up on her cover letter. Cindy, if you handed out the cover letter?
Justice Coons is still on.
Pardon me?
Buckey's still on, and...
I see that, it's not noted in the audit report, it looks like it's defunct, but I think it's, meaning it's not in her cover report, her summary report.
Right.
But she shows a column with the name, but with no money and no transactions on that.
Well, on page three, it shows a balance there.
Yeah, $205.
Right.
Yeah. I'm looking at page two, zero, the assets.
That was beginning balance, 8.
Cash balance beginning year, 205. Yeah, so it stays 205, which is a good thing. But then, cash balance, you know, I could, what we should do, Steve, is they got a correct off Griffith's, and they have to tell us what that Coon line is about there.
Right.
Let's see. But to me, the key thing was, in auditing the cash deposits for Judge Trebowser and Justice Martin, there were no instances in which deposits were not made in a timely manner, all deposits were made within 72 hours. Then she talks about getting rid of Justice Griffith's account. And then the auditor does say here, the next sentence, "Per discussion with the court clerk, she will contact the Controller's Office to determine appropriate action acquired in closing that account." But I think we should follow up on that. "This report is intended for the use of the mayor, the trustees, and justices, not intended and should not be used by anyone other than those specified parties." But anyway, I would make a motion that we accept the orders, the court orders report with the two conditions that we talked to the court about.
We haven't time to read this?
Pardon me?
We haven't time, we just got this.
You want time?
Yeah, I would like to have time.
It's just, I would certainly grant time. One thought, we could do it, if you have, I don't think tonight would be feasible for you if you want to read the whole thing, so if you want, till workshop, we can do it then.
That doesn't seem that complicated.
No, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty straightforward, but if you want some time.
We'll meet again next Thursday.
Yeah, third Thursday. Here, we'll table that motion until, yeah, some time, look that over. But in the meantime, I'm going to talk to the court and get that straightened out.
Can I have your copy?
Sure.
Just a real quick copy, we talked, Judge Trebowser about the status of the grant 554. And this was for the humidification system for the village.
All right.
While we're looking, we should be here at any time.
January?
Yeah. But we have two outstanding grant applications that we will hear about as soon as possible this month.
What'd you say, two? Court one and...
2015 Community Development Block.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, so that's regular business. Well, I had some additional business, we talked about the 3% admin fee, I'll talk to the town about that. Then we'll go to some public comment, we'll let you guys get in and out, and then we do have to go to executive session on police contract. Let's see. Let me see if I can find something here, a minute. It's to do with USDA also offers a program where our residents could qualify for federal funding at presumably competitive interest rates to do home repairs, even possibly purchases. What they're asking for is a little quid pro quo, where if we would put a link on our village webpage, that those that are looking there could find it and go delve into the USDA. It's, let me see if I can find it here. Bear with me a second, it was... In essence, they offer alternatives to banks and bank mortgages and bank short-term loans if you're trying to stay in your house, keep your house... If you're trying to stay in your house, keep your house, buy a house. And when the USDA ref was up here with us on the water project, he was actually going out to visit some of the USDA real estate customers. It didn't sound like it could be a bad thing in any shape or form. Let me just see if I can recognize the woman's name that sent it to me. I'll go down to the bold part, but funds are available to help rural residents in the Village of Red Hook in Butches County purchase or repair single-family homes. Funding is available through USDA Rural Development's Single Family Housing Programs. Section 502, Direct and Guaranteed Loans and Section 504, Home Repair. All they're really asking folks, and I'd like your authority and permission to get, to go on back to put a link on our website is we could put a little worded blurb and have the active link that would take folks there. And then I think it'd be a good thing. It says 502 is direct loan for low and very low income applicants to USD loan assistance. 504, Home Repair offers very low income homeowner loans to make home repairs and modifications. So it's probably seniors and folks on fixed incomes and so forth that might benefit most. What's your thought?
Sir, I think it's a good thing, stick it on there. Fixed income qualified.
I would make a motion that they won't, it'll just, we'll just have to have our web manager, web designer, put it in the right place, you know, put the link where we could tell them where it makes the most sense somewhere. But I'd like to make a motion that the Village of Red Hook offer a spot on our webpage to our homepage to USDA for these loan programs.
I have a second.
Any other discussion? One favor?
Hi.
Hi, thanks. Another interesting thing, about a week ago, I came across some Red Hook information that ties in with a story that's really developing in Ulster County. There is a large commercial water bottler trying to come over into Ulster County where it's Niagara bottling. And they're talking about using City of Kingston water, which comes from a town of Woodstock watershed for a plant that's located in the town of Ulster. So there's all kinds of municipalities, complications already. And they were talking about using 1.75 million gallons of water a day. And they build the bottles, meaning they actually make the plastic bottle, truck it and everything out of the plant. But then last week, it hit what's called the Kingston Times, that they're also looking at a town of Red Hook location up on Cobra Town Springs where it's like Turkey Hill Road up in that north quadrant of the town. And it's apparently somewhat in front of the town of Red Hook Planning Board. It's privately owned by a different individual right now. The issue is it raises all sorts of, in my opinion, environmental issues for the Village of Red Hook in that we have more than our share right now of heavy trucks moving through Route 9 and 199. And this water, you know, they're talking between 30 and 100 truckloads of water a day is what the anecdotal Kingston Times reporter numbers are showing, which is a lot more trucks and they're full weight, full weight, heavy loaded. Then what I would call there's some macro environmental issues. Do you want as a town to be selling your water, pulling it completely out of the watershed, trucking it and then trucking it again and selling it somewhere else? I don't think we, at this point, know a lot about it, but it's something brewing and I'd like the public to hear about it and get some public input. I'm glad the reporter and pander here. What I was thinking too, there is some literature and some learning material out there where it addresses the concept of bottled water in general. And it's a movie called Tapped. And it's something where I thought I'd like to offer Village Hall as an educational forum. We could screen this movie here. I'd like to see it first to make sure it's valid and it has any validity. But, but point being, I think I wanted to get the news out there that this is brewing and it's not right in the village, but there would probably be, if it goes to a certain extent, it'd head for seeker at the town level and we'd probably want to be an interested party and so forth. I haven't polled folks for what their opinions are, but it's, I think it's something we need to be A, aware of and B, start researching and form our final opinion. But overall, it's, it's not a great thing for the Village of Red Hook as far as I can see. So with that in mind, I'd like to, you know, offer sometime in January, February, we could invite the public here to see a screening if we feel this movie's worth it or have some sort of colloquium, but I would do a little more work on some studies and research. But I don't know, anybody have any thoughts on that?
They ran an article in the paper today, scanned it very quickly. And if I read it correctly, this company is no longer interested in the source of Red Hook.
Oh, really? Yeah, that'd be good.
I think it was the Freeman of.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They haven't made a formal application to the town planning board, have they?
No, the only one that's actually coming to town planning board had the citizens of Ulster County. And I guess where.
I would think that if they did go to the town planning board through Sieg, we would be an interested party and have an opportunity to comment.
We have no applications or any.
Well, if they've indeed withdrawn, that'd be, save us a lot of headache.
I'll see if I can find it and send you the link tomorrow.
Okay, yeah. All right, we'll just keep it on our radar then and we'll see what's brewing on it. All right, and then, let's see. That's what I thought. I think what we could do out of fairness to those that are out there, let's go to public comment. And then we could head for executive session and come back into general session and try to wrap it up. Before we go, probably anybody else have board member items, anything? We'll open up, if you could just state your name and for the record, who has a question?
George.
Yeah, George.
Has anything happened with the bus stop I suggested a couple of months ago? Moving into front of the Village Hall instead of up the street blocking traffic?
No, nothing's happened on that.
I may actually see a lot more, I don't know if it's a bigger bus that they have?
It is.
Who's that now? Looper, Bard.
It's actually stopping in front of the village parking lot on Route 9.
Sometimes they do.
I've seen them stop in front of the village building. I think that was your recommendation.
Yeah, we have a fire hydrant out there, it's not going to take any, it's not affecting a park.
I've seen fewer, maybe in, you know, lighter crowds, but I've seen the palpitations.
It's a nothing park, they can pull to the curb, but if it's busy, the restaurant or something like that over there.
Oh, there's people parking in there. That's why I've seen them at, on Friday nights parking in front of, they're just driving in, they have parking, but because the parking spaces in front of the village building were, were full. So they did stop in front of the village building, so. But I was observed a larger bus in normal, so I don't think they could have made the turn and.
Well, that's why I think they stop up there sometimes, depends on the size of the bus.
Yeah.
Some of them between in the parking lot.
The smaller ones, I think, yeah.
Well, it probably has to do with Route 2, because some of them go down to Hattford and some are going back to Bard, so it's.
They did talk to Transportation and Bard about, you know, trying to find an alternative route, especially after 10:00 PM down Prince Street. Then they turned a corner on the church and then out to Route 9. And they're, they're willing to sit with us to see if there's an alternative, but basically none of the timing in their routes.
Well, you have no way they're going to turn up, I come down my street, just like the Loopus and down my street once in a while. I don't understand that one, but.
They go, they go down Graves, or Church Street, or Church Street, I'm sorry.
Yeah, not a lot all the time, but I have track and trailers coming down there, a lot of trucks coming in, including Loopus.
Oh, the Loopus?
The Loopus.
Is he lost or what's he doing, I mean?
I didn't ask him either. Nobody stops at the stop signs, I can't say nothing to nobody.
Yeah, because it's weird, because that route goes 199 toward Tivoli, they should have.
He was going off 9, going towards, you know, basically going out towards Myland. But I think he made a right-hand turn on Graves. So I don't know where he was coming, looping from, but I don't see too often.
That'd be a tough turn to make on.
That's a problem. Where?
Sounds like a hijack bus.
Track and trailers make that turn. You ever see the pole tipped over? Look at my front lawn, I got the tracks right up against my front lawn all the time.
So they go on the cherry, they'll turn on the graves from cherry?
They go from Graves onto Cherry or they come from, I mean, both ways, they go from Graves onto Cherry.
Wow.
You know, small 18-wheelers coming through.
From CVS, where, where are they doing?
Um, I don't, CVS, they don't deliver at daytime. I think it's like Ginsburg and some of the bigger, bigger trucks. Some kind of express on the side, one of them.
The mayor of CVS, they deliver at about 11 o'clock at night, but they pull in, actually to the, to the parking lot backup of Route 9 and use the front door.
Right, usually most of the trucks I think delivering food or solders and stuff like that, but some of the bigger ones go through. I don't know where they're coming from, they may be just trying to avoid the light, commuting. When I come down 199 from my plane or something like that, if it's missed the light, they're coming down the street sometimes. So they're actually, they come down Cherry at the top, they come in Graves Street.
That's bizarre, we do have a five-ton weight limit on our side streets.
Not on the books.
Pardon me?
It's not on the books, it's not enforceable.
What do you mean?
It's come up 10, eight years ago. It's not enforceable, no signs up to say that.
Yeah, we do, yeah, we have signs up.
The last time they looked into it, it was never passed or whatever and.
No, it's not, we got our red book expert over here.
Don't wait on me. I'll get there.
Yeah, I'm going here too. 190-14 I'm getting, Jay Bird. If you can read it there, George. I got 190-14. In addition to provisions of Article 5, trucks in excess of the weights indicated are hereby excluded from the streets or parts of streets described in Schedule 11, attached here too and made part of this chapter except for pickup and delivery of materials on such streets. So nobody should be cutting through, I mean.
And 190-45 says all streets, weight limit five tons, location entire village.
So I think we got.
Well, last time it came up, again, it would be 10 years ago, it was never in the law, so it's not enforceable or whatever, that's what we were told. Not anybody here qualified to be able to make that distinction either, you don't wake nothing away with the C. Not anything.
What we've done in the past, I don't know if it came up, George, but if you can identify the truck, we can write to the purveyor, you know, if it's Ginsburg or, I remember once, I remember on Venna Road, some oil.
Ginsburg is not the biggest truck, everyone, most of it is a tour bus, obviously not heat-up loss.
Because in fact, we did write once to Ginsburg on a different issue, but, you know, we'll send a letter, hey, if it's a route driver.
It's not on a regular basis, you can sit out there and you probably just catch a couple of days, but it's not like it's one truck coming by at a few in a while.
But if you get a name and odds are it's a local, the guy has the same route, you know, we could.
All the garbage trucks use this with bypass also.
The big heavy hauler garbage trucks?
Waste management.
Yeah.
You know, they pick up once a week in the village, but they come down my street about 20 times a day.
Oh, really? Well, they're overweight and if they're not, I would say they're okay on pickup day.
It's bypass, it's bypass polite, nobody wouldn't, you know, want to make a turn up at that intersection.
Yeah, but that's, your street is like, I wouldn't want to drive a truck down your street.
I wouldn't either, but.
Well, we can write to Welsh, we know, I mean, this, in my opinion, a heavy garbage truck can be on the street when he's making pickups, but he can't be cutting through.
I think I'm on Thursday.
And they got to be more than five tons, so. I would guess, but anyway. Anything else?
On the presentation at the beginning, I hope they won't spend too much money, I realize it's great money, give free money, but that's a non-starter. I hope they haven't spent more than 30 days looking at this because it don't look like it. It's a boilerplate program and they're just, you can sit around and talk to people for 20 minutes and come up with the same thing they came up with.
You have to look at the holder, there's a binder actually.
Yeah, I know he's giving you the short form on it.
Yeah, very short form, just the data that he, we've been going through, list all the services, hours, salaries of all three municipalities, different types of service deliverables. So if you go on their website, you can see all of that data. And if you don't feel like I'm giving my binder for a week, you can look through it. But it's a pretty extensive study, what he did, he was a very short, I mean, the actual study, you know, this is in paper form and it goes through. You can come look at it, you know.
Yeah, I understand.
But it's, it is specific to Red Hook and the municipality.
I don't think so, it wouldn't happen, because nobody likes to give a very power in the kingdom.
But different options were studied, so not, this is not for implementation, this grant was for study. So with the direction, so there's, there's been some clear opinions expressed by certain municipalities and that will be fleshed out. And again, what he said, that nothing's going to happen without the approval of the municipal board.
Because our limits, George, on how much the small munis can do as far as financially. We're in a 2% tax world and they had a net 1% levy freeze program. It's, you know, the town does have paid professional management and we're paying for it. And that's the angle I'd like to explore, hey, if we're buying this already, how do we get a little more bang for our buck? And, you know, within our staff, one of the things is when you have turnover and retirements and things, there's a big issue with a lot of what's done in our world is from somebody's head, not. So there are some things that have to be categorized and labeled. And, but we haven't made a final call, but those first three, four, and you might be tongue in cheek, but it did take quite a bit of work to analyze the budgets and look at who's doing what. And it was a little eye-opening. For instance, for us, the capital side too, like we don't buy trucks as big as the town buys, but they spent half a million dollars, if you looked at one of their presentations, you see their budget curve go like this in the highway, because they had to buy two trucks.
That's by the DB funds.
Yeah, it's not in the APF, but it's. But.
I don't see how they could with the 10-wheelers there. And that's what we're talking about, so the option fine that he mentioned, you know, where there's village-like streets that require the same techniques as we, it's different flooring technique that the town does. So these have all been analyzed and talked about, both not just the committee level, the employees of the three different municipalities, also with shared.
Unless you combine all these elements into one, I don't think it's feasible to think in four months. To put too, put too much effort into.
I think he brought that up, that was option six, and that was of the five that he presented, probably the hardest one to implement. And so I think he was pretty forthcoming in saying.
Yeah, he did bring that at the end, I'm just looking, you know, he went through it pretty quickly, whatever, but.
Yeah, so go on the website when you have some time.
I don't have, I'm one of those people that don't have a computer.
Uh-oh.
I'll give you my paper. I'd be happy to share.
Nothing good comes from that.
I'd be happy to share my paper con.
Thank you for your input. Back there, yeah?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees. My name is Arlene Harkins and I'm a resident of the town and the village of Red Hook. And I would like you to, I would like to ask you if there was a possibility that you could pass a law to allow people like us, me, my husband, and other people in the village who live in the town of Red Hook but own property and pay village taxes to sit on the board and committees for the village, example, planning boards, zoning boards, et cetera. Some years ago, the Village Board passed a law to allow the village judge, who is now deceased, as an elected physician who lived in the town to be the judge for the village. So he did not live in the village, but he did pass the option so that he could be here in the village to work. This position doesn't, his position didn't, being as the judge, he did not pay village taxes to be in this position. So that was just something that you, or prior to you had passed. So by passing this law, it would offer a larger pool of candidates for any open seats on boards or committees. We people who own businesses and pay property taxes in the village have a concern of an, and an ongoing challenge for our village to be prosperous and inviting for residents and tourists. So please consider passing this law so that many of us, business owners that support both our village and town can share our resources and ideas to make the village the best place for everyone to live.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll comment in there, just looking for something myself. I'll comment in a, just looking for something myself. Can't find it. Quite honestly, we're a pretty forward-thinking board, and we've come up with this idea before. One of the problems in a village of our size, we only have 1,961 folks, and most of them are working and doing things, raising families and so forth, and it's, it's a small talent pool to begin with. And like you know with your business and your husband's work, planning and zoning is, it's a community service, but it's also very, very technical, and you really need people that are committed, and I'm not saying you wouldn't be, but I'm saying committed and willing to study, there's annual training requirements, and we did look at this, and it's actually something on our plate to consider. The, the one downside would be is, how, like, how many people out there are town residents that are that in tune with village issues, you know, that'd be a question, but I think in the end, the power appointment comes from the mayor and the board, and I have actually no problem with expanding the breadth of our search pool, then we would still get to pick who, well, we wouldn't be forced. And a while back, we actually had council look into what the local law would be that we would have to do to broaden that pool. I know Jay and Brent come from the planning and zoning world, and they cut their teeth as village residents, what, 15, 20 years ago, on zoning and planning boards. And it's been a great asset to us, that then they moved to the various boards, and they're on the village board now. A town resident could never be on the village board, but the town would still be there. We even had certain people identified in the town that we thought would have some skillset as far as their current careers, and I have no problem, I don't know if you folks wanted to react a little bit, but it's, it's something we toy with, not just on planning board, but like Jen was saying, for volunteer, other committees, there's, even we see in the volunteer fire world, there's, there's an issue with folks working so hard on their day jobs and second jobs and families, that there's not a lot of folks with time to come and sit and do technical work. And they do incredibly important work at the planning boards, and George, the CBA doesn't meet that often, but when they need it, they're around. And we have them currently staffed, but we're still drawing from a 1,961 group of names, and you can just preclude or exclude a certain amount in, in general. But anyway, well, any thoughts on either end?
What did you were alluding to, you passed on the concept, what that comeback was?
What legal comeback was?
Yeah.
It would take a local law, which would be public hearings and so forth, and there's really, you can broaden the pool, but then the philosophical concept becomes what we tend to know are our village residents, we don't know the 11,000 town residents, and what would the 11,000 town residents know about the village? So you'd have to find a blend...
Didn't she say she, they have to be property owners?
I'm not saying from the pool of the town, I'm saying from the property owners and the village, and the property taxpayers here. Like, we've been paying taxes in the village for 30, it'll be 32 years now, with the diner. I would, would be, you know, I would be able to volunteer my services to sit on a board. Only people within, that, that are in the village who pay property taxes, not, I'm not saying take people from the town, you know, that have just moved here two days ago or whatever.
They would have a vested interest.
Right, we would have vested interest in the village.
Well, it's a concept, I, we didn't, we didn't examine that niche of it with council. I don't know if you could be that nichy, because I don't know how many folks are in your category. We saw before, we're the number two in 24 roads down here, it was, oh, the, that was the benefit units in the sewer district, which is probably about, well, I guess, I guess what I'm getting at, we will certainly entertain it, I don't know that that little smaller niche is allowable, because you're sort of precluding, it's a subcategory of a town resident, but I don't know the answer, I would say it's, it's worth looking into, and like you said, when it comes to appointment time, I'd rather have a bigger pool with interested people, but that are also committed to the village, you know, it's something where we do see, and we sometimes joke about it, but there is some town-wide sentiment that is not necessarily pro-village, you know, it's, so you don't want to foster that either.
I think we also struggle with, you know, finding the most qualified people, you know, because restrictions and regulations are pretty more difficult that involve, and it does take a certain amount of training and commitment, you know, again, this...
Oh, I understand that, but you go, you go to meetings all the time, you were, you're trained in, you're trained in exactly what you do as an engineer and architect and whatever, and then you took that and you brought it here, but you did not also know all the speculations as to what the village is and whatever wanted also, so you learned. So there's other people that are out here that, that are willing to learn and give time to do these things to help the village, you know, prosperous.
I think, I think maybe a good thing to expand the pool, you know, something to consider, more people to look at, the better.
You could tie it to the property owner or business owner, property owner, so you don't have an absentee landlord.
Right.
Sitting on a board. And have a stipulation, if you miss more than two or three meetings, you can be removed. So it's, it's encouragement to be there.
And I, and, and as all of you, you don't take this lightly, and I don't think that other people that would be coming to volunteer would be saying, oh my God, it's going to be such a, a piece of cake and whatever. No, they, I think everybody knows that the hours that you do spend and the time that you do get, you know, and harassment from people and everything else, I think people do understand that. I mean, I respect that from, from all of you, but I just think that we need to, for me, it's someone that comes to the village and lives here for five years, doesn't get it yet. And if you, you know, quote unquote, put that person on the board because, oh, they did a sewer in Long Island, it's not the same thing. They have a whole different view of being there than here. So I just think that you should think about it and, and consider something to that effect for people that are truly here, I mean, you know, 50 some-odd years, almost 60 years is vested in here, and so I just think it would be a good opportunity for some of us people to be able to help out.
Yeah, I don't think we disagree, I think, like you said, we could look at that secondary niche that you're talking about, and, but I, this board and myself, we're looking to find the most committed, energetic people we can, and we have to find, we have to have the pool to grab from, and the bigger the pool, the better, so, but we, we'll work on that. Anything else? Quiet lady in the back? No? Okay. What we would do is, like I said, I'd like to go to executive session, and for the public, what we generally do is we go to executive, we're not quite sure how long it'll take, we'll make a formal motion, it'll be on police contract, and I want to add on, on real estate, it's to do with the parking lot purchase, so I'll update on that. So I would add, I'd like to do a motion that we enter executive for police union contract negotiations and the parking lot update and contract price negotiations. Is there a second on that?
Second.
And then, on favor?
Aye.
Before we run off the dais, what we'll do is, we disappear for a while, the film man stays, the reporter usually stays, but we tend not to...
It's like, do I have to?
I can't predict how long we'll be gone, so, we try to make sure, so we can retreat to our executive conference room.
I'm late tonight.
Okay, we're back from executive session. It looks like it's about 9:44. Is there any other business from the board? If not...
I think there's a couple of things, but Brent would like to do the last one when the time comes.
Okay, well, I'll do the first one, then we'll let him do the last one. We need a motion to pay bills after OY.
Some rule?
And I think, I saw the vouchers floating around, it does look like too thick a pile, that's a good sign, so if you could get your signatures on that, and I heard a second, on favor?
Aye.
And then Brent, would you like to wrap up tonight's meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
I'll second it. On favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.